Paul Jones, Ben Benoy, can you hear us? Tim Taylor? Paul, Ben, Tim, can you hear us? Well, we'll let the council try to reach them separately and we'll just go ahead and keep moving forward then and go from there. So ready, let me know when you're going to record, okay? Okay, so we good to go then? Paul, Ben, Tim, Fred again.
This is Tim Taylor, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine, Jim. Tim, can you hear back? Tim, can you hear us back? Okay, so Ben says that he can hear Tim, but he can't hear in the room. So he can hear the other Zoom speaker, so can Paul. They can both hear Tim speak, but they can't hear who's in the room. And Tim could not hear you back.
Could not hear me back, okay. Okay, Paul, Ben, Tim, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Excellent.
Yes, Commissioner, I can hear you, this is Tim Taylor.
All right. We got two out of three. We'll have to talk to Ben separately.
Yeah, Ben's down, he texted.
I can hear you as well, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks, Ben. I think we're ready to go then. Alice, we're good to start?
Yep, we are good to go.
Okay. Well, we welcome everyone to today's commission meeting. And as we do all the time, we ask someone from the public to provide their prayer reading or thought as a volunteer, and then followed by a pledge of allegiance. Would anyone like to be able to do one or the other? Might as well have a high school dance. Kendra? Sorry.
Katrina.
Katrina, sorry. I've only known you here in this building for, what, a year or so? We won't bring that up in public. Yes, ma'am, please, thank you. And can we have someone lead us on the pledge? Bryce, thank you.
My name is Katrina Cole for the prayer. Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to come before you today to deliberate and to counsel together, to discuss the needs of our community and of our government. We're grateful for the blessings that you've given to this county. We're grateful for the leaders that we have, for the hard workers, the employees, and for the citizens of this county that work so hard so that we can have a good community. We pray for a blessing upon the commissioners and those who are presenting today, that they will have clear minds to deliberate well and to speak clearly about issues. And we pray that there will be a spirit of cooperation and of love one to another. We're so, again, we're so grateful for the blessings that you've given us. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And thank you, Katrina.
Bryce Armstrong, Community Development, if you're able, please rise and repeat with me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Then with that, we have a recognition of employee of the month.
So our employee of the month, this month, is Jay Critchlow. I'm sure they did.
Always happens.
Always happens. So we have in the letter here that there was a bit of a situation where we had Sergeant Jensen was moved to booking, and Deputy Martinez went on FMLA, and you got to do all the work.
A little bit, a little bit.
Yeah, it says that here, and it says that you pulled longer shifts than everyone else, that you had to assign overtime, that you always made sure that you were as fair about it as possible, that you would come in early to receive briefing from the previous shift and that you would stay late, and that while you were doing all of this, they're pretty sure that 75% of your blood was Monster Energy Drink by volume.
Pretty close.
And that any time that things got difficult, rather than complain, you would just use some witty reference from an 80s or 90s TV show song or movie.
Close.
I think, I think those are good coping mechanisms. Monster Energy Drink and 80s and 90s sitcoms, I think, actually are quite healthy. So thank you for setting an example for the rest of us, that rather than complain when the going gets tough, that we can find humor and lessons. It also says that you're a straight shooter that isn't afraid to speak your mind, that you get respect from the inmates and give respect back to them, even when maybe their behavior isn't, isn't great. That you spend your time to listen to and give advice to young deputies, and that you really enhance the lives of everyone that you come in contact with, and that you're also an incredible asset for the Sheriff's Department because you are great to bounce ideas off of, and that you're great at analyzing things and giving honest and forthright feedback, regardless of how you feel that it will be, that it will be received, which makes you invaluable. So we want to thank you for the work that you do for Utah County. And with that, you want to enlighten us with some of your wisdom?
There's not much there. I've been, I've been oversold, so, no.
I highly doubt that, but you're probably very humble as well. So if you want to stay there, we'll come and take a picture with you.
Look at this here, that's got some gift certificates, we'll grab that when you go, but we'll come stand over here.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. We'll go ahead and go through the regular agenda, find out which ones we are, have gone through. We have no questions and don't want to, don't need to discuss. And so we will begin by going through items one through 10. Are there any that we should hold?
Yes, we need to hold number five.
Five? I asked if we could hold number six. I know what, I read the outline, what it's entailed, but I just want some additional clarity if some could get that one, okay? So five and six. Then 11 through 20.
For me, number 16, 17, and 20.
16, 17, and 20.
That covered mine, so we're good there.
And then 21 through 31.
Number, number 22.
22?
The only thing on number 22 is it has no account that's, that's coming out of, and so I didn't know what to do with that. It just has to be determined, so I just, anyway, we can hold that one.
Okay, 22.
24.
24.
Beyond those, I didn't have any.
I'd like to hold 31 because there's a letter I'd like to read from that one. And as a note, number 30 is in conjunction with Provo City's plans to help light up the area. So any discussion on that one?
No.
Okay. No, so no discussion on 30, so we'll hold 31. Any others? Okay, then I understand we have to hold for close 32 and 34.
Please.
And strike still 33 and 35.
Correct, so that would be holding the personnel one and also the sale of real property.
Okay.
And striking.
33, and we'll strike 33 and 35 and hold 32 and 34. Okay. I think that's it. Alice?
Okay. I have us holding number five, six, 16, 17, 20, 22, 24, and 31. And then as far as closings, we'll hold the stated 32, striking 33, holding 44, and striking 35.
And you said hold 31?
Yes.
I was reading, okay, thank you. Okay. With that, then we will go ahead and we can plead the consent agenda, and then we'll go into our work session.
Adam Beck, Utah County Attorney's Office, thank you commissioners for allowing us to have some time to run this past you, have you have an opportunity to, to discuss it before we put it on for approval at a later date. So this project's been in the works for quite some time. It stems from some of the protests and demonstrations back in 2020, where we were using our facility use policy to try to help accommodate some of these gatherings. And we, we found that as far as the free speech portion of the policy, we felt like there might be some holes and some inadequacies that we, we wanted to, to reevaluate and look at to see if we could shore them up and, and make it a better policy. And so after, after some of those protests, we, we took some time and, and went through the case law, took some time and went over some of the other facility use policies from some of the other surrounding jurisdictions to see, see how ours compared with, with theirs and, and to see if there's any way we can, we can beef ours up a little. And as you can imagine, it varied in, in all the jurisdictions. But in our, in our research, we, we were going through the, the Utah Administrative Code. And the, the Administrative Code was very robust, and I felt like it, it really touched on all of the areas that I felt like we could, we could improve on, on ours. And since the, the state already has adopted that, we, we felt like maybe we would largely mirror that policy and, and bring it to, to Utah County. And so that, that was the primary reason why we, we started working on the facility use policy. Secondly, while we were in, making some changes, we felt like since this code hasn't really been updated since 2015, we would go through and just update what needs to be updated, pull out what, what doesn't need to be there. And so if you've had an opportunity to take a look at the policy, there's, there's a lot of little red lines, and at the bottom you'll see the free speech, free speech activities portion, which is the, more of the major update. Katrina Cole, who's a law clerk from our office, has done a great job on this project. She, she has come in, in the last few months, and it really helped, helped us put this together and, and make a lot of the edits, edits that we, we needed to make. This, this has been vetted by quite a few attorneys in our office. I've been through it a few times. Dave Shawcroft from our office, before he left, he, he has, had been through it. Rob Moore from our office, Tim Taylor, and Zachary Zundel. In addition, we had sent it over to Public Works and had Glenn Tanner take a look at it, and, and all of these parties were able to make some, some contributions and make some comments and changes. So, anyway, yeah, that, that is the, the purpose of these changes, and just wanted to see if you had any questions or any input before we, we put this on the commission agenda.
One little topic that jumps out at me is, well, on the page three of 24, it says demonstration means the assembly of a group of individuals that join together express a point of view openly. Should that be means the peaceable assembly? Kind of a constitutional language there.
Okay.
Because there's different kinds of groups that assemble for a variety of things. Peaceably assemble? Or means the peaceable or assembly of?
I can look through the facility use policy and see if it's used in a way.
Hi, Katrina Cole, law clerk for the Attorney's Office, Civil Division. I'd be happy to look through the code and see if there, or excuse me, not the code, the facility use policy, and see if there's a reason for why the word peaceful couldn't be put in there. It, I mean, there might be instances where an unpeaceful demonstration would be excluded, maybe. So I can, I can definitely look into that and see in what ways demonstration is used and if it makes sense to include peaceful.
I'm only thinking of some of the things that have gone on across the nation recently, and, and various groups called them just simple, you know, expressions of speech, and that's, to me, was misleading, and in fact, previous two or three White House presidencies earlier said that that was not peaceable assembly. So I'm, I wonder if that's why the language should maybe include it, so add some meaning behind when we say demonstration.
Yeah, be explicit in that we're allowing peaceful demonstrations rather than.
Right, and so, you know, the, the idea of inserting violence into the demonstration wouldn't be an expression of point of view openly necessary that's under law, so I just was, why I was thinking about that one word.
And would any of the other commissioners be supportive of, of that change?
Well, I was here when we last revised this, and it was kind of painful to go through, to tell you the truth, because it was extremely restrictive. And, and frankly, on this one, it says it has red lines. I can't see the color red. And so to me, they both look like clean versions, and I wasn't going to go through and do a comparison. So I have not had the opportunity to really go through with what, you know, and have any comment on, on, onto that. But the last time we did this, and I don't know if you have that in there, but it was, it was proposed that we do these little free, we do these, these zones, which we're, we're putting zones in place. And we were told over and over that if we don't do this, we're going to have all kinds of chaos all over the place because the Provo, the Provo Temple was under, was, was going to be dedicated. And I watched very carefully to see what was going on. We had no protests, except for there was one walking down the street because Provo went heavy on theirs. And so I am, I'm of the opinion not to go super heavy with, with these, you know, with this type of activity. We, we talked over and over, and it was pretty restrictive on even signs. And if somebody was to come in here and hold up, you know, a sign, and we don't really want them blocking in the way, but if somebody was to hold up some sign in here, or it was restrictive enough that if they were coming into this room and protesting, they would be shutting it down. And, and for me, I have no appetite for any of that. I think that there's got to be an open forum for us to be able to come and, and even have, you know, debate. Civil debate would be preferred. And, and I, I just don't want to have a stranglehold when it comes to free speech and the opportunities for us to engage back and forth. Now, there is, there is a line that can easily be crossed, and I, and I get that. You know, and where those lines are, we don't, we don't want all kinds of activities going out, out in the hall and disrupting what's going on with our normal business operations. And, and those things probably should be taken outside. But, but still, I'm, I, if you can give me a different version than the red line version so I can actually see it, that'd be helpful for me kind of going forward.
Yeah, we can absolutely get you a different version, one, one that you'll be able to, to see. I, I will say that it is my, my position that I think this policy tends to may, maybe even make free speech more broad and, and more, more available than, than previous. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll get you a copy and then we can have further discussions, if you'd like.
I'd also like to add, if you're interested in specifically the areas of the, the policy that address those concerns, I think 5.2, the time, place, and manner of free speech activities, might give you an idea for what this policy says, and maybe answer some of those questions you have about what this is allowing and not allowing.
Okay.
Ms. Gardner, you have any thoughts you want to add to this?
No, I thought, I thought it looked good, and I did notice that it expanded the free speech, and I thought that was a, a good direction.
Okay. That's all I had on that one.
If I can make a suggestion, one of the things we could do is have Adam and Katrina make an appointment with Commissioner Lee and to try to address and walk through some of these and, and address any concerns he might have. And then if you're comfortable with, after that, we can then put this on an agenda for a future agenda for your review and this decision whether you want to approve it or not.
I'm okay with that.
Does that work?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're now in our regular agenda. And we are in number six, approved and authorized, Commissioner Seigert agreed with. I'm sorry, I jumped over Commissioner Lee, sorry.
I, I just held this because it does have approve or deny, so I, I'm, I'm fine moving forward with approval.
Okay.
Now, so I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number five with the stated reasons.
I will second that motion to approve the items in number five.
Okay, y'all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that passes three zero. Okay, agenda number six. I ask the, how you pronounce it, is that SOSH Incorporated?
Yeah.
For Communication Training System?
Yep.
SOSH?
Yeah. So it's that time of year, as we're beginning to plan and of course oversee elections. One of the biggest challenges we have is poll workers. They have to be trained, recruited, organized, and project management. Election is basically a big project, lots of deadlines, lots of moving parts. This is our, our project management platform that also has a training module. So for example, in the county, we use RELIAS for full-time permanent employees from a training and compliance perspective. But the licensing for RELIAS is limited to the number of sort of full-time permanent employees that we have. And with our election workers who are part-time and temporary and come and go year in, year out, this platform is what we use to train them and deliver that training online and ensure compliance, and then also do kind of our project management for all of our requirements and deadlines for the election. It also allows us to communicate directly with our, our election workers and poll workers as we schedule them and, and give them assignments. So that's, that's what this tool is.
So the online, that's, that can be done at home then, or here at the office?
Exactly.
For, so temporary, temporary employees can do this at home and figure out how to do this.
Exactly, yep.
Because I looked at the list, I thought, I remember all those. So this is just helping standardize it all?
Exactly.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize agenda nine verse six.
I'll second.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Sorry.
You're fine.
I jumped ahead, but that's okay.
We're good.
Okay, all that passes three zero then. We have.
Did we vote? I, I'm an aye on that. I don't think I said aye.
Aye, I didn't either. We're good.
Aye. Right.
Next one is 16, I believe. Approve or deny ordinance?
So this one again has, you know, approve or deny. I know we went through the process of, of putting in place the mining and grazing zone, kind of with an understanding that there's modifications as we go, and I just wanted to kind of have Bryce, give Bryce the opportunity to talk through that.
Sure. So this was, is an applicant-driven request to rezone some property up West Canyon. Familiar, I think we have several west canyons around the county, but this is up in the northwest corner of, of the county, what, north and west of Eagle Mountain. The property owner owns about 195 acres. Currently is own mining and grazing, as Commissioner Lee referenced. This applicant has requested that it be rezoned to a Critical Environment Two Zone, CE Two Zone. Their, their application, I think that's part of your, your backup. It's a little unsure exactly what they want to do, but it sounds like they want to do some type of commercial camping, glamping. They also refer to, reference some residential use. This, our CE Two Zone is our, our zone that allows recreational resorts, higher densities, if you have a water system, think of Sundance. That's one of our CE Two Zones. And so as such, that's considered a residential air zone in our, in our general plan. So this necessitates a general plan amendment also, and so that's why the wording is, is the way it's worded. A little bit of context to this area, it's fairly remote. You travel on some Class B gravel roads, county roads, and then you leave those, you get on a Class D road onto West Canyon and then you hit a gate that is maintained by, I believe, the Cattlemen's Association in that area and some other property owners. And then it's just a, a private gated road, basically. The county commission, so this road historically was a county road for a number of years. And then in the late seventies and then a, a portion of it was deleted as a, as a Class B road. And then 2003, the remainder of West Canyon Road back down to the gate was, was deleted as a, as a Class B road. The portion from the gate down to the gravel north-south Class B road, I'm not sure of the coordinate, that is still a Class D public road up to the gate, if that makes sense. And staffs look at this, it just doesn't really seem to be consistent with our, our land use policies generally allowing higher density residential zone, or potential, a higher density residential zone in, in an area that is remote, prone to natural hazards, particularly our urban while and interface area. And then where residents and, and other users in that area have petitioned that road to be removed and be private. If this was to be rezoned and the use is contemplated in this application where it be put in place, that has to be revisited and that would have to be opened up as, as a public road and paved and a lot of different things. So staff felt that it wasn't necessarily appropriate to, to, to grant this rezone. Public hearing was held at the Planning Commission level as, as required by state statute. A number of residents showed up, all of them voiced opposition for some of those same reasons. A couple of emails were sent, including one from Sitla, who owns some land up there. And those are included in your backup, expressing opposition. So that's kind of the, the process in a nutshell to this point. I should note that the applicant was not present at the Planning Commission meeting. And so there wasn't a chance to kind of understand exactly what, what they're hoping to accomplish. We've sent several emails to them, let, let them know that meeting, this meeting, I don't know if they're here, they may be here this time. And a written letter also, so.
I, I didn't look at the additional information, what the other zones look like adjacent to that squared off one that you have illustrated on the attachment. Are there other similar camping zones, residential zones attached to that particular one?
No.
Is there a separation?
There's no existing CE Two Zone anywhere near this area. The closest, next zoning designation would be an RA Five, which is down, down the valley a little bit more, kind of where Wasatch, Wayne Clay is, that area. Again, we kind of visited this, this several months ago, camping is always allowed on your private property. So this, this person can always camp, but the, the commercial element that they'd want to have and then also make a potential residential use would, would necessitate the.
So this be a zone, all of it's basically off on its own, satellite by itself?
Yes, yeah, that's not a good point.
Isolated, basically, okay.
Kind of, kind of a spot zone, if you will, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
I don't know if there's any one from the, are you here for this item? Okay, I don't, I think another person may be here to speak, but it's your meeting, so, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Terry Messersmith. I'm actually with the Lehigh Cattlemen's Association. So, West Canyon, north of Cedar Fort, I'm born and raised in Cedar Fort, so I know that place extensively. And obviously, it's, it's a little bit hard to even be here and not be somewhat emotionally attached to the issues. And so I appreciate your patience with me as I try to shed a little perspective from where, the way we see it. But the Lehigh Cattlemen's Association basically controls the entire area. It's part of a master planned, according to the county master plan, listed as a watershed area. Now, we're in a drought like we've never heretofore seen. And when we talk about bringing in camping and an organized campground, we have to haul water right now to our cattle. I think of the nine springs that we draw on, six of the nine are basically dried up over the last few years. So it's a very sensitive area and as we deal with it, we consider ourselves prudent stewards of the resources up there. And we've had to draw back even on our cattle numbers just because of drought and water and those things that really impact the, the good well-being of our cattle up there. Lehigh Cattle Association is one of the biggest associations in the state of Utah. And we work really hard to, again, to be prudent stewards of that natural resource up there. It's our position that if that gate, you know, we put the gate up, we do maintain it, you know, kind of with the onset of off-road vehicles, it just, the canyon was getting destroyed. So we really control the influx of the public up into there. And there are many people with keys and there's still a significant amount of traffic, but we control it. You know, we, we pride ourselves on not just being, not just the stewardship, but, you know, the fire remediation that the cattle provide. We feel that if this thing gets opened up and it becomes, number one, a rezone, the, the long-term plan of the county would obviously have to be rewritten to change that from a watershed area and the mining and grazing that it is to commercial entities or nature, which would allow the residential. We just think that would destroy one of the greatest resources left in the county. With that being said, we control so that the own, the members of the association control over 50%, own over 50% of the real estate. And then we lease approximately another 40%. So with cattle leases from the state and any other private individuals that want to lease to us, that we put the ground in Farmland Assessment Act, Green Belt, and it just adds a benefit to all involved. Now, even this 195 acres is currently listed in, it's leased to one of our members who runs cattle on it. We run as an association, but they do have it listed on the Green Belt currently as most of the ground up there is. And, you know, we, we just think that it's very prudent that we protect that resource. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that might.
So is your feeling that we should not approve this?
I sure hope that's imminent, but yes, we feel that it should not be approved.
Because of the water concerns and the cattle ranging?
Yeah, it, it's a real delicate area and we get by with very little rain. You know, it's been, when I grew up in Cedar Fort, we, we had water flow out of the canyon anywhere from 10 to 20 acre feet, I'm sorry, not acre feet, cubic feet per second through our irrigation season. Now there's no water that flows out of the canyon at all. So there's been a significant change in the runoff of the water. We try to maintain enough vegetation up there to allow the water to percolate into the soil and not just runoff in a flood. So we, we've cut our cattle numbers down. I think right now we ran between, between five and 600 pair of cattle up in there this year, when in years past, maybe eight to 10 years ago, we were running 12 to 1400 cow calf pairs up there. So.
So do you know if the people that own the land that have asked for the change? You talked about you have a gate that accesses that land. Do they have deeded access to their property?
They have, well, I don't know about deeded access because it's no longer even listed as a county road past the gate. So back in, I think it was oh five, the county withdrew all ownership or entitlements to the roads beyond the gate. And there's just a big turnaround area there, so they're not even listed, they're listed as prescriptive easements, not even county frennied or county maintained roads. And if I recall, did I say that correctly, Bryce? So.
Okay, well, do they have deeded access?
No.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, if any of the property owners up there have any type of access easements or, or deeded access. But I would imagine that they have, as I understand, property owners have gate, have a key to the gate.
Yeah, property owners have keys to the gates, but those are strictly prescriptive rights, not deeded rights, if that makes sense.
We didn't do a title search to see.
No, the reason, the reason I ask is because, I mean, you, you worry about what developments could be up there, but we won't give a building permit to somebody up there if they don't have access to their property. And you worry about water, but they can't build a water system and they can't get a permit from us to build a water system unless they own those water rights. And so what I want to do with my land is not, is not prescribed upon what you do with your land if I own the water rights and I own the access and I have a deed. And so your argument as you come forward, I mean, if the people don't have deeded access, we're not going to give them a permit. If they don't have, if they don't own the water rights, we're not going to give them a permit. And so I don't know if, you know, if your concerns of what they do with their land, if, like, you worry about water, but if they own the water rights, then they own those rights. And if they don't own the rights, they can't, it's not like they're taking your water. So maybe I tend to lean towards, and, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm, I'm a farmer. The boots I'm wearing right now have sheep crap on them, so I get you. But I favor water, I mean, I, I favor property rights and I'm trying to see where if, you know, we have zoning for a reason and we have permitting for a reason and we're not going to permit a whole subdivision up there if they don't have access and if they don't have water. So I'm just trying to see where your concerns balance with property rights. If the landowner wants to change the zoning and we already have guardrails to account for them not using your water and for them getting access to that land, how does that impact your use of the land?
And, and my only real point is, is obviously we need to overturn the general plan that lists that entire area as a watershed area. So we would start with the revision of a general plan that I believe was established back in the 1970s or reestablished in the seventies. So we're talking a significant time of that jurisdiction. But not only rewrite the general plan, but we also would have to rezone. And, and that's just something from an overall perspective that we would just put forth our hat and hope that that would be denied. So, and, and I agree, I, I, I support property owners' rights. And I do a lot of development myself, but I'm very careful to make sure that what I develop fits that general plan. And, and as you counsel, people have supported for years and years. I just think that when we start to change too much, sometimes things get way out of balance and have a greater effect in a wide area than just 195 acres.
I'm ready to make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion, well, maybe I'll make a statement first. I believe in private property rights like we do up here and I think we're pretty defending on those. But I'm going to make a motion that we deny this application because it does not appear that they meet the requirements under Section 1692(c)(1), 1692, 1692(c)(2), 1692(c)(3), Section 1.08-f, 1.08-h, 12.24-a, and 12.28-a. And so with, with that, I think there's significant work that would need to be done before we get to a level to where it would be congruent, congruent with what is, is applicable up there for us to do. And, and if, you know, if the applicant was to work on these and get those to the point to where they're, they, they meet these criterias, it'd be a different conversation for me. So that's, that's my motion.
Yeah, I can second that motion. I absolutely can support that. I'm not opposed to changing the zoning, but I agree it needs to be in congruence with the policies that we have in place. As the Cedar Valley grows, I think we're going to have to change the, the general plan. And we're going to have to plant, change zoning. But we also need to take into account the master plan for Cav Williams and a lot of the access that they're doing there. I know they have some expansion there. And with the property owner not even being here to kind of help us understand more of what they want to do, that does make it a little more difficult. So I'm not opposed to the idea of changing the master plan and changing the zoning, but I don't think we have all the elements necessary to do it at this time.
Right. Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah, it was a motion and a second, yes.
Okay, all, all in favor of denying this request?
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero as denied. Okay, thank you, Bryce. And then I think we have item seventeen, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I want you to walk through this one. And, and I, and I was trying to follow the different logic of it was on, it's off, now it's supportive. And, and I, and I agree with, it's nice to put some sort of base out there in which we say, even though it's a snapshot in time, it's going to change. At least we have something to kind of base and measure it with. But I, as you went through this process and, and trying to find where that's out, I just wanted to hear your, the reasoning, you know, reasoning points on there. And, and of course, I believe we have, we have two proposals, correct? So there's, there's a, there was a. So we, we definitely have to look at one.
Sure.
Or the other.
Yeah, yeah. Bryce Armstrong, staff again, maybe I'll take a few minutes and just kind of tee it up a little bit, kind of what we're doing here. As you may be aware, the state requires a, every county and city to have a master plan, a general plan and certain elements of that general plan, which, one of, one of which includes a moderate income housing plan. And so this county has had one in place since the late nineties. In 2019, the state legislature modified that section of the state code to require cities and qual, and counties to pick strategies from a list of, a menu list, if you will, from state code to help implement the, the creation and provision of moderate income housing in their jurisdiction. And so what I thought I'd maybe do is have a quick presentation that has a couple of slides to kind of let us know what exactly we're talking about when you talk about moderate income housing and kind of what that looks like as it relates to, to unincorporated Utah County. But also, I'll also emphasize our, our longstanding land use policies and kind of why we settled on the strategies that we, that we did. We feel that fits the need of, of the county residents, but also protects our, our strategies, namely directing growth into the cities where those services are provided, especially for moderate income households where, you know, jobs and transportation options are more readily available. So I think Tom's going to pull up this presentation real quick and. So state code defines moderate income housing as housing occupied a reserve for occupancy by households with a gross household income equal to or less than 80% of the median gross income for households of the same size in the county in which the housing is located. Okay, so that's code language. What does that really mean? In 2022, the estimated median family income for the Provo-Orum Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is comprised of Utah, Juab Counties, was $96,000. And that was as determined by, by HUD. A moderate, and then it's broken down by family size. So a moderate income limit for family of four is basically 80%. It's not exactly 80%, it's, it's close because there's some statutory adjustments that, there's three pages of them, so I won't get into them. But that's what that, that number looks like for a household of four in Utah County. So what does that mean as far as housing? So if you have that household income of $74,900, that means you have a monthly income of $6,000, $6,200. HUD and their federal programs consider a household income burdened if they have more than 30% of their monthly income used towards housing costs, all housing costs, which that, that includes utilities. So you're looking at $1,800 a month for, for housing costs. And you can imagine what that can get you in this market, is, is you, is you talk about rent. As far as you talk about purchase. As far as you talk about purchase, under ideal circumstances, as of August, which has probably changed, again, this is another snapshot, this would qualify a person in that household or in that income bracket of a purchase of about $425,000 to $450,000, which out of the county may be quite difficult for a purchase, mainly due to.
And that's August 2022 prices.
Yeah, well, market rate, interest rates. And so, so that's kind of what this housing looks like that we're talking about, that we're trying to adopt strategies that would help promote this and create these opportunities for this type of housing to be created in the, in the unincorporated area of the county. Couple of just fun stats, planner, and so planners like to geek out a little bit on numbers. And so appreciate your humor and me here a little bit. But I found this interesting. It kind of helps emphasize the county's longstanding land use policies and how they're really working and how Utah County really is different. So this chart shows every county in the state and it shows the percentage of their overall population that is unincorporated. And this is based on 2019, so this probably even needs to be updated a little bit more, but COVID kind of put a wrench in census data in 2020. There's two outliers, as you can see here, Davis County and Utah County are basically only have 1% of their, of their total population is in the unincorporated areas. And the next closest one is four or five percent, five times is high. You know, some of these rural counties are as high as 64% of their population is unincorporated. So you can kind of see that the county's had a land use policy of directing growth towards the cities where the services are while still providing opportunities in certain densities for housing out in the county. Now, you, you compare Davis and Utah County, two outliers, and it really shows Utah County has its own outlier. Those two counties, if you, if you factor in population density of the unincorporated area, county, Utah County has, or Davis County has four times as much population density as, as Utah County. So just giving some context as to, as far as our, our strategies of, of land use and directing growth towards the cities and how the county really is, is different. Maybe Tom can get me to the next, I have a.
It'd be interesting too, because a lot of those are actually within city boundaries that we still have unincorporated land inside of a city boundary area, like in Lehigh and some of those, you know, we still have unincorporated land that's with wholly within cities.
True, and I, I think we, I think most of that hopefully captured those, all those unincorporated islands, that, that was the intent, was to provide the, the density of just areas that are unincorporated, including those islands.
Including those.
Yeah, but we do, you're right, we do have a, a number of small pockets still left that are true islands.
Right.
Correct. This last, last page is another really interesting list. This shows every county in the state again, and it shows between 2010 and 2019 how much their overall county population increased or decreased and how much their unincorporated areas increased or decreased. I've highlighted two, again, the two outliers, Davis, Davis County and Utah County are the only counties that gained, overall gained population in that time period, but their unincorporated areas lost population. Davis County was 16% overall between 2010 and 2019. I actually updated those for 2022, just for these two counties. So they, if you factor in, if you bring it up to 2022, Davis County increased 19% and they're, they're, they lost about 7% of their population in unincorporated.
How much is that is, is due to annexation versus actually leaving and moving out?
Well, I can answer that for Utah County. And that's, maybe I'll show, so go next. It's just, it's a next, yeah, it's another, it's a multiple screen or multiple document. Sorry, if you don't have it, it's, it was a two-page PDF. So, yeah, scroll down, there you go. Okay, there, so there's Utah County. Again, the Utah County gained 23% through 2019. You factor in 2022 and that jumps up to 32%. Yet they lost 17% or we lost 17% in our unincorporated areas. Now, we're still building houses in unincorporated area. I went back and looked and in this period of time, we issued approximately 350 permits for new dwellings. You times that by the average household size in Utah County of 3.5, 6, whatever it is, you're talking about 1,200 people that we added in that period, yet we still lost 3, 4,000 people overall. And in Utah County, we didn't have any incorporations in that period of time. Our last incorporation was Fairfield in the early 2000s. And so our loss was due to annexation, which is consistent with our, our land use policy of, of directing growth, high density growth into those areas where, where those services are provided. And so that kind of gets us back to, you go ahead and take that, I'm done with that, I'm done with that, to kind of the task at hand. So this amendment is, was namely for the county to go through its strategies, which we've already picked out several years ago. The state kind of changed the wording on some of them. So state wanted every qualifying city and county, it's interesting, the qualifying threshold for a county is straight unincorporated population and you have to be a first, second or third class county. And so Davis County didn't have to do it because they have less than 3,000 or less than 5,000 people. So I, I think a, a more appropriate threshold is more of a, a percentage, overall percentage. Doesn't mean you don't have these strategies, you need to have those, but to kind of have a penalty associated with if you're not meeting certain thresholds. Anyway, it's editorializing a little bit there, but nonetheless, the county is required to, number one, all counties are required to, to have these strategies in place and then to, to do some reporting, which we'll follow up as soon as we get hopefully approval on this. The strategies that we identified several years ago, they're listed kind of in your, in your backup. I know, let me back up, there's a lot of red on that document. Most of it is taking some of the data, some of the stuff we just went over and, and updating it, but also kind of rearranging it and kind of leading with that data and then having our strategies more towards the end of the, the moderate income housing plan and, and then listing some of the, the projects that, that we've continued to participate in. So as I mentioned, those, the state provides 23 or so, a menu of these 23 items and this, these items were cut and pasted from the municipal code and state code. And so they're really geared towards a, a city environment and city provisions. So for, for rural unincorporated county, you know, it, it becomes a little bit difficult. But the three that, that the county has adopted in past documents or our past plan, the first one is related to accessory dwelling units. The strategy is to basically remove barriers associated with accessory dwellings. We actually had an item on today that, that was proved on consent, that we both had an applicant come in and ask for some, some changes and staff recognized some things that maybe were, were barriers. And so we felt that was appropriate. There was another one that was, I don't have my copy in front of me here, but there was another one that was related to kind of a reducing or allowing zoning for areas of mixed use. Now, again, that's usually a city thing, but we kind of look at the agricultural side of that things and, and allowing caretaker dwellings that we've, that we have out in our agricultural zones with, with some higher densities. And we feel that's a good strategy that we've tried to incorporate in the past and we can always enhance and, and, and make, remove barriers in the future. Then the other strategy specifically that, that we chose was related to participation of Utah County, or Utah Housing Authority, Utah County, Housing Authority of Utah County, I think what it's called in, in down here. And I think the, the county has historically participated in that. That's one of those menu items. And so I think that's something that continue to use as one of our strategies. The other part of this requirement of this last legislative session was to have an implementation plan, not only identify it, but what are you going to do about it? And so we've basically said that we'd go through these every two years and review them and update and, and especially focusing on barriers that we're finding that are kind of keeping maybe people from utilizing these more. To be honest with you, the most effective way of creating moderate income housing in unincorporated areas is accessory dwelling units.
And, and we, we are reducing or eliminating the minimum on the square footage? I don't know.
Yeah.
No, we did that today.
Earlier, we, we eliminated the, you can only have 40% of your, percentage of your size of your dwelling. We still have kind of an overall limit, which is 1,000 square feet, but up to 1,500 square feet if you sign this thing. And that was really based to make sure we still qualify under moderate income housing. And we have these, these adjust, these rate, rental rates from HUD that kind of are in line with that. But we had a, the applicant today had a really small farmhouse, well, say 1,000 square feet. And so the old rule said you can only have 40% attributed towards your ADU. So that limited her to 400 square feet. And so now she can go up to one square foot below her, her main, main house size. So, so yeah, we are, those are things that we're looking at. We feel every two years is a good time, we, we've had this in place for about two to three years originally, and staff's had some time to process a number of these. And there were a number of other, other changes that the applicant didn't propose that staff felt that needed to be adjusted to, to kind of help these, help eliminate some of these barriers and still protect kind of the intent of, of what the county wants to do out in the unincorporated areas. Last thing, then I'll shut up here. To Commissioner Lee's original point, the, the versions that we have, that there, there's a ordinance, it's part of your backup, that was the one that was originally recommended by staff and recommended by the planning commission as, as it is, they recommended this unanimously. That version took out a paragraph that dealt with those numbers that we, we're kind of looking, originally I was thinking, you know, that's just kind of, that thing changes in a month. And so, but as I got thinking and kind of looking at other plans, I felt it did provide some context. Again, it just kind of helped people look, see what that looked like at that moment when we adopted it and can kind of give a, some, some basis of, as it relates to our strategies. So I would propose to put that back in with the updated numbers.
Well, and I think if we're updating this every two years, I think it's reasonable to update those numbers every two years. So, I mean, and I can definitely see that we don't want to necessarily put numbers in policy that aren't going to get looked at again, but since you already have a plan to redo this every two years, I think your addition of adding the numbers makes sense. I want to, you know, I think, I'll go maybe a little further where you talk about what's the number one thing we can do to increase moderate income housing, and that's ADUs. I think on top of that, the other thing we can do is just have more units, right? Supply and demand tells us the more units we have, the more affordable they will be. And your office has been very good at working with us as we've looked to add farmsteading and different things in the county to allow us to have more units, and I think that will help the cost overall. So I want to commend you on your ability to work with us, especially when we challenge the norm. You guys have been great.
Appreciate that. It's, it's always tough in the county where you're, you're not hooked up to water and sewer and you get these, these, these notices of adjudication where you have water rights that are going to be restricted. So you kind of have to balance all of that, but appreciate that.
Good, good. I was comparing notes with Los Angeles County. I don't want to go in that long discussion, but we're doing much, much better. Thank you.
And I guess final note, as you saw through my emails, we technically were on, on the naughty list as per the state, but they have, they give you a 90-day grace period and I had reached out to them ahead of time to let them know that we're almost there. So this will kind of hopefully get us off that list.
Thanks, Bryce. Appreciate that. Anything else, Commissioner Lee?
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can prove it. I'll make a motion to approve item number 17.
With the, the ordinance, not the ordinance.
Right, it would be ordinance version two.
Oh, ordinance version two. Okay, I provide number 17, ordinance version two.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that passes three zero, it's adopted, version two. Thank you. And now I think we're on 20, and I think this is a continuation from last week.
Yes. I, I continued this one. I had some great discussions. I don't know if you want to come up or not. You just want me to proceed forward? Okay. I had great conversations with, with this, and I feel comfortable moving forward and unrestricting them. I just want to put a comment in there that when, when we restricted this back during the, the, the process of budgeting, we, we did so, in my perspective, I'll put it that way, with an understanding that we're going to, we're going to address and look at mental health issues and make sure that these, that these deputies address mental health. And so originally I was going down the line of having these eight deputies go through on their own and, and put in, into their, into their job description that they would go through with the mental health training exercises. And talking with Matt about that, that becomes very cumbersome for him on a, on a rotation basis, and I totally see where he's coming from with that. And so we came to a conclusion that what he will do with Ralph is that as these deputies are moved around, I think it actually turns out to be a better scenario in the end because we'd have eight, and then you can imagine trying to, trying to manage that with them being on shifts or not being on shifts, and sometimes they would and they wouldn't. But what we came to a conclusion with is that as they rotate around, because you can't always be in, in the, the medical facility, because that just wears people out. So before they go in to that medical facility or dealing more with mental health issues, they would go through a training which would be set up with Matt and also with Ralph so that they, they are continually going through and looking at mental health issues and how to address them, how to recognize them, how to deal with them. And that way, as they transfer, transfer around and go through, we get more of a broader perspective. And eventually all the deputies would probably go through that training, which would raise the whole thing up instead of just having eight. And so for me, I'm, I'm comfortable in authorizing the transfer of restricted funds to go through this process and with kind of a caveat that, that, that mental health component will be implemented with both Ralph and, and Matt as they go through it.
It's a good compromise, find a good solution.
Yeah. So I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
And all in favor, say aye.
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 And item 12, or 20, excuse me, passes three zero. Okay, now we are in item 22. This is a wellness program. Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, so this one, as I was looking down through it, I just didn't see where the funds were coming from was the only thing. I noticed it was.
This has been Ben Noye, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just noticed that it was, it was completed and checked off by purchasing and, and that we still, we don't know where the, where the funds are coming, you know, where, where the account is. And so I'm always a little hesitant on that to approve something that we don't know exactly where we're, if, I mean, I, I would assume that purchasing looked at it and said, yeah, there are the appropriate amount of funds in this account to account for the amount, which was $10,575. But without, without that kind of check off, I'm not sure if it's in there or not.
I, I can speak to that. This has been Ben Noye. I, I received that account number from the sheriff's office. I forwarded it to Alice. I could provide it here as well if needed, but we do have that account number. I believe there's been a PO that was approved. It just, we just need this corresponding contract to be passed and approved as well.
So we, maybe just in the motion, if we could just put that account number in, if you have that on hand?
I do, I could provide that. Maybe to Alice.
You got that?
Okay.
Alice says that.
Okay, fantastic.
Anything else?
Nope.
Do you want to make a motion to approve it with the account number?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Number 24?
Okay, number 24, I asked to hold this and they gave us some, some leniency when we called the Bureau, BLM, Bureau of Land Management on, on this issue. And, and I'm always, I always want to be a part of any discussions that are going on, especially when they're dealing with land here in Utah County. My, my concern is that I know that PLECO is involved, not all the counties are, are going to be involved. And the question that I asked, and I, and I haven't yet received an answer on that, and that is, how much of the land are we talking about in Utah County? Because if we're going into negotiations to. Because if we're going into negotiations to talk about all these different lands, if we're only talking about one parcel, I think PLEPCO and everybody else, they're going to negotiate for the best one anyway, and SITLA is going to be involved in it, and they're going to be looking at the highest and best use. And so I'm just wondering if we even want to be a part of this discussion, if it's just minimal, and sending lawyers and our time and everything to it, if it's minimal? I don't know the answer to it. And so.
Do you want to continue if we don't know yet?
What's that?
Did you want to continue if we want, if we have more info?
I don't think that we can continue it. It was kind of a deadline thing last time, and we got a continuance to this date so that we could have the discussion. So I'm wondering, Ben, if if you happen to know the answers to some of that.
Yes, Commissioners, this is Ben standing there with the county attorney's office. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I can speak a little bit to this. I don't know exactly what lands are are being proposed for this exchange between the Bureau of Land Management and SITLA. The land exchanges are going to affect eighteen different counties. Utah County is one. We received a letter late Thursday of last week offering for us to be a cooperating agency. One detail I'll point out is that that letter from the U.S. Department of the Interior, Bureau of Land Management, does say that even if we do not become a cooperating agency, we will still have opportunities to give input. And so so that may assuage some concerns about not having a seat at the table at all if we decide that it's not worth the resources and time attorneys and everything else to be a cooperating agency under the under the Act and then the NEPA policy here, the environmental assessment that they're doing. So it is a, it was a short timeframe. I'm not sure that we have no ability to ask for additional time. We may be able to get a further time to kind of assess what specific parcels in Utah County they're proposing to swap, but my my impression is it's a minor impact in Utah County.
And we and we know, we know the big player on this thing is going to be SITLA, and they're going to be looking to maximize their, you know, their opportunities there. And and I know, as we've been cooperating agencies in the past, I mean, it's it's kind of time-consuming. They have meetings on a regular basis that you have to go to, and they're they're, and they will have lawyers there and maybe somebody from the commission. And so I'm just wondering how far we want to go if we know that SITLA and others are going to be the, they'll be there, and PLEPCO will be there from the state. I'm just wondering how far we want to go.
And especially if this doesn't preclude us from having a say.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's, like you say, those PLEPCO and SITLA, they're going to be looking out for the best interest. We may not want to spend the resources, especially if it doesn't preclude us from being able to at least make comments.
Yeah. What's your, you said you 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 suspect that we would have a say. Is it, how confident are you in that, Ben?
Let me read you the exact sentence out of their letter, if I can bring that up here quickly. Give me one moment, and I'll find their their exact language. So it is, what they say, this is the end of the, the very end of the penultimate paragraph in the letter from the U.S. Department of Interior, it says, please be assured, whether you elect to become a cooperating agency or not, we will afford your agency ample opportunities to participate in the NEPA process. So that is their assurance to us, is that regardless of whether we elect to become a cooperating agency, we will have ample opportunities. I don't know, it's, I don't know exactly what that might mean, but that's what they assure us in their letter.
And how 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 many, Ben, are actually going to, out of the eighteen are going to be cooperating? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that, unfortunately.
Okay, I thought there was just only a handful.
Well, the point here, too, is that the SITLA have an active interest in this process, so they have they have a lot to gain and have a keen interest in this whole program.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we actually need to physically participate.
Right, and I think that was a pretty strong assurance that we'll still have input. So I would be fine not utilizing the resources.
So I'll make a motion that we strike, number twenty-four from our agenda.
All right, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number twenty-four is stricken.
All right, item number thirty-one. Commissioner, you said you had a letter to read?
We, the county has been offered a hundred thousand dollars in in behalf of someone else, and I wanted to read the letter to that accompanied this offer to Public Works and the County Civil Division. I pulled it off the attachment, and so I have it here in front of me to read. But it says, to Kate Christensen and county commissioners to whom it may concern, on November seventh, two thousand twenty-one, my brother Gary Rasmussen, fifty-nine years old, a longtime resident of Provo, passed away from COVID-19. He was loved and will be missed dearly. When we were together, the family's conversations were of Provo's canyons and biking trails, where he biked on a daily basis, and where he took a myriad of pictures throughout the year. My mother, who passed away last March, desired to give back to the place where he spent so much of his time and energy. I am matching my mother's commitment of her desire is to place a park bench on a biking trail in his memory with a donation of a hundred thousand dollars toward improving and extending the canyon trails. We have attached a design of the park bench and the metal plate that would be designed into the back rest. The bench will be made of heavy steel, powder-coated black, and anchored onto a concrete pad located on along the trail. We prefer to be placed in Provo Canyon. We have chosen a local professional contractor to build the bench, and his work is recognized in many businesses along the Wasatch Front. The finished product would be designed to weather the elements and last for many years, and thank you for considering this offer from us. We look forward to your reply. Sincerely, Deanne R. Stone. Does Public Works have anything they want to add to this? This is an extremely generous gift from Deanne, and I wanted to read her letter in public on this.
Very good, thank you. Richard Nielsen, Public Works Director. Kate did reach out and talk to Ms. Stone on this, to see if there's any specifics that they that she would like to see happen with this donation. The desire is just to to do work along the trails. It can be maintenance, it can be improvements. They do have the the bench they would like to to have placed somewhere along the trail in Provo Canyon. We've looked at that, it is a good quality bench, it's like what you see in in many of the parks around the the valley. One of the thoughts is that we will probably purchase more of those same types of benches and put them in different places along. You'd have the one that would have the the memorial plaque on it, but others would just be a a generic bench with the same style, so people can stop and and have a place to rest along the trail if they desire to. And so that's kind of the the direction we're we're headed with it.
If the plate is nominal enough, maybe you might have every other bench type of thing with that plate on it. Just have to ask what she would like.
It's actually engraved right into the back of the of the.
Not a separate patch, a plate that soldered on or?
No, it's it's integral to the to the bench itself, so. Many of the ones you'll see around in the different communities have have like the city logo engraved on it. That's that type of a bench, so.
That's extremely generous, so thank you to Deanne Stone for that.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think it's a great way to memorialize their family, and we're happy to accept that and utilize any of the money to maintain the trail around it and keep it in good in good standing and good faith for them. I think it's great, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-one.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
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 That's aye with a deep, felt thank you to Deanne Stone for that. Are there any public comments? I see none physically here. Any online, Alice? And with that, we are now into our closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye.
Bye.